Okay, we're gonna call our City of Cresco Council Meeting to Order. It's 5:30. Roll call.
Carmen.
Present.
Buska. Fasson.
Present.
McConnell.
Present.
Kreener.
Yes.
Okay. I'm acting Mayor Pro Tem tonight because Amy's unable to attend and Dave, our current mayor, has resigned from his position and I'll read the letter that he wrote. "I have been hired by the, to be the Public Works Director for the City of Cresco, Iowa. According to the State Code of Iowa, it is illegal to be the mayor and a full-time employee of the same city. Therefore, I am resigning as the mayor of Cresco, Iowa, effective January 17th, 2024." Thank you, David Breno. And thanks for your service.
Thank you.
And for your upcoming service. Okay, we'll act on the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless it's requested prior to the council meeting. So number one is approval of the claim, approval of the agenda. Number two is approval of the claims. Number three is approval of minutes from January 8th, 2024. Number four, approval of minutes from January 16th, 2024, special meeting. Number five, approval of Class E liquor license to Jag Dambi LLC DBA Cresco Mart. Number six, approval of street clothing closings for portions of Second Avenue East for the Notre Dame School lasagna supper on January 26th, 2024.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fasson.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Okay, staff reports. Public Works, do you have anything, Dave?
I've got a couple things here, yeah. Just heads up on the water main breaks this winter. We've had six so far and I don't think the ground has froze that far. It's just luck of the draw on those, but hopefully that slows down. They've had an issue out at the sewer plant with one of the pieces of equipment. I think they've got that, they know what's wrong, just waiting on parts availability. I found out this afternoon, Dean called me, the John Deere loader out there we have needs a new turbo. They came up and looked at it, the mechanics did. Turbo is about $3,000 plus labor to switch that out. And the last thing, we talked about moving some of the road closed signs around on the Seventh Street East Project and, or West. And that's, we're waiting on Generation X to come down and deal with that, so. I think we'll need to discuss here in the next meeting or so when we want to open that up. Talking with the guys in the city shop and water and sewer, they all believe that we should have people driving on it a little bit. So there's something to think about coming up when we're going to open that up. So that's all I have tonight.
All right, thanks, Dave. Police?
Well, I have nothing to report this time.
Okay. Administration?
We've been busy finishing up the budget. The downtown assessment letters have all been mailed to the affected property owners. They have until February 16th to pay with zero interest. Also a reminder that the Rural Housing Assessment Survey is open until January 31st. We're still encouraging everybody to fill it out, residents, people who come to town to visit, employees who work in town. Also, on your spots, I did hand out the theater schedule for the rest of the year. This is their 110th year in, open. They're having events each month and some of them are free to the public. They'll have that posted online as well.
Okay, thanks, Nikki. Any committee updates?
Nothing.
Okay, any comments from the audience? Okay, then we'll go on to business. Number one is the public hearing on budget amendment number two for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Any comments?
There were no written objections either.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Number two is the resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024.
That's just a resolution to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
Seconded.
Fasson.
Oops, sorry.
Fasson.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to do the Oath of Office for Patrol Officer Dalton Rush. Welcome. You just need to, maybe the top part. Oh, you need to make sure right here, too.
Hi, Dalton Rush. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of police officer in Cresco as now or hereafter required by law.
Due to this 22nd day of January 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we need to have you sign your certificate.
What's that?
Actually, I should probably have you sign mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, number four, Lieutenant Fordiatus and Andy Klein with the Tree Town Kennels to discuss the police canine project.
How are y'all?
Sam.
So. Can you hear me now?
Better.
There we go.
I don't think it's on, Sam.
I don't think it's on.
Is that a button on the top?
Yeah, it's on right now.
Okay.
I can talk loud.
Yeah, you're good.
I'm trying to talk loud. So I'm Lieutenant Samuel Fordiatus, the Cresco Police Department. I'm here today, Andrew Klein couldn't be here with Tree Town Kennels LLC. We do have a representative here. He is one of the current handlers and has one of the canines from that kennel here today. This is Deputy Rube Chatfield from Floyd County. After this is all said and done, we do have a little presentation with his canine if you show, guys wish to see it. So here in Cresco community, we pride ourselves on our work ethic and the ability to work together. So we have seen that we've been banding together, you know, for events such as, you know, the Mighty Howard County Fair, as well as, you know, National Night Out that also represents all first responders and everybody in that capacity, and such smaller events as well. While our town is moving in the right direction, there is a lingering issue that persists here in this community and in the surrounding communities. It's the illegal use of drugs in our communities. Right now, I am wanting to add more tools to our officer's belt, as well as to reinstate the canine program for our department, to help fight the battles against the drug epidemic that is in our community as well as in our surrounding community. I have been doing research as well as Officer Walper. He is going to be designated as our canine handler. We took together and tried to do our research on this canine project, as well as the schools and certifications that it's going to involve to acquire this canine, as well as price. We decided to go with Andrew Klein. He can't be here tonight. He had some other obligations to attend. He is the owner of Tree Town Kennels LLC based out near Forest City, Iowa. Mr. Klein, he's running a dual-purpose dog now since 2005. He personally knows the vendor that he gets all of his canines through in Poland. And so far, he has stated to us that none of the canines that he's got has ever done him wrong, for the most part, when it comes to actually getting canines out onto the road. Right now, he approximately has 45 dogs in service right now around, around the state and other places as well. So one question that we do have is a single or dual purpose. Which is the best way to go? This is totally up to city council, as well as to our chief, and as I spoke with my chief, we're looking at more going towards the single purpose, which is towards the narcotics identification, as well as a little secondary and tracking for individuals as well. So in a little bit of facts that Andrew Klein had, that he actually gave me and I researched a little bit, was some successful searches that he actually has had for at least missing kids. When it comes to the narcotic side, he just, you know, that's kind of more criminal, but for at least missing individuals, in Mason City back in 2020, 2020 November, they found a missing two-year-old. It was major news across the US. The kid had fallen into the water and was extremely cold. One of his canines was actually, one that actually found the kid, and the kid is still, you know, alive today because of it. He's also had two other incidents with two different dementia patients around Iowa. One was in Indianola in Warren County. One of his canines actually located a lady that was unconscious in an extremely cold environment as well, and she's here alive as well. And then there was another one as well in Etamwa where the handler found him as well. So his dogs have had very good success in the past when it comes to the training, as well as the handler being trained as well. When it comes to a single purpose, we're looking at more of a floppy-eared dog, which is more susceptible to being a little bit better of the public image, you know. It's more of your German Shorthaired and your Labrador Retrievers. Although I did talk to Mr. Klein and he did say you can get a Shepherd, a German Shepherd or a Malinois as well for a single purpose, but the department's more kind of stick towards the droopy or floppy-eared dogs as well. So if we were to get approval by the city council, that's probably the direction that we would head, would be a Labrador or a German Shorthaired, some, whatever is kind of available at that time. If you are open to a dual-purpose dog, Mr. Klein did advise me that he will find a social dog, which means the dog's not going to do anything that it's not supposed to upon command. So if it were here today, you know, it's not going to do anything that it's not supposed to, but again, you know, dogs, they're still animals. Stuff can happen. We did take that into consideration as well. Deputy Chatfield, his dog is a dual-purpose canine as well. Sirius, he's actually going to go grab him now. We do have prices for how much it's going to roughly cost. These aren't exact figures because we ain't going to know until we actually get to that point of doing this. It looks like a single purpose right now is running about $13,000, $13,000, and a dual purpose is running about $15,000. This cost includes four weeks of the handler's course, leashes, harnesses, an ID collar, and a reward toy, which will be displayed kind of today, kind of explaining what that is. The dogs also, through Mr. Klein, will have a three-year health warranty. The only extra addition that we're going to have is the hotel fee for that four weeks, but everything that we're looking at doing is going to be 100% fundraised or donations. So that's where we're kind of looking at like that. I have talked to Ms. Hill over here about insurance for the canine as well. I think we're going to get the numbers. Have we got the numbers yet? Not yet? Okay, well, we haven't got the numbers yet. Some people say they average about $100 more on insurance as well. With approval, I already got in contact with our local veterinarian. We're going to have a meeting with them to get a health plan, so that way we can make sure that this canine is going to last us as long as possible to, you know. Hopefully, seven to 10 years is what we're hoping for. So then also, a single-purpose dog is betterly commonly used for a PR tool, but it also helps deter a lot of suspicious activity as well. A dual-purpose though will definitely, you know, some, someone that's not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and it does help us out. It's another tool in our tool belt because no one really wants to mess with a dog on the wrong side of that. But right now, it sounds like we're going to be more going with the single purpose, so that way we don't have to necessarily worry about a bite dog or anything of that nature. And it, I'm not going to have all the answers when it comes to the actual training, so I, like I said, I did ask Deputy Chatfield to come, just in case there was some kind of questions on the actual training part. Again, Officer Walper's sitting in the back. He's going to be our canine handler. He, I wouldn't say volunteered, he kind of was excited about it when we kind of brought it up. So if you guys have time for a little bit of a test or show.
Maybe bring him up here too, so the camera will see it.
Yep, no problem. He's very social. Shortly after getting him, we actually had him in all the schools in Floyd County, so he's had, anywhere from preschoolers all the way to fifth graders petting him. The one day in about two and a half hours, he had 400 kids actually walk up and pet him, so he's very social. He's very, how do I want to say it? Obedient. So I mean, a lot of his commands are actually in German, so "Siris klaps," and he'll listen. I mean, "Stet, boots." So what he's, everything he's working for, just like your dogs at home, what drives him, what drives him is actually his ball. It's in my pocket, carry it with me everywhere I go, just in case I got to play him out the car, if I got to recall him, anything I need to do, he'll listen to me, knowing I got the ball. So if I give the ball to Sam, Sam can actually give him the commands to do what he needs to do too. So he will obviously listen to me more than Sam because he trains with me all the time. So we, we pride ourselves on a minimum of 16 hours a month in training. Most of us surpass that. I average anywhere between 30 to 40 hours a week. I try training with him a minimum of an hour a day. So he is very social. Like I said, you guys have pet him. We've never had an issue.
Shepherd?
Yep, well, he's Shepherd Mount Mix.
Okay.
So this is one of the dogs that Andy, that Sam was talking about, Andy, he actually originally came from Poland. His half-sister is in Delaware County. His, I believe it's a brother or half-brother, something like that, is in Dakota. It's actually one of your, one of your officers' brothers getting a dog from Andy, coming up, I think, in the spring here, so.
How old the dog is that?
What's that?
How old the dog? Two years?
So he's three now, he's three. Yep, he turned three in September. We got him shortly after, or right before he turned two. Yep, shortly after, or shortly before turning two, we got him. I took possession of him in August, went to class in September of '22. Since then, I just looked it up. In a year's time, we had, yeah, you guys smell him, doggies. We've had, it's like 88 deployments in a year, seven successful tracks between people that fled from us, ran from us. We had one juvenile that ran away from home, had a little bit of mental illness issues, mental capability issues, ran away from home. We were able to successfully track him. Second day on the shift, on shift with him, we've been October 2nd, we started. I was off the 3rd, 4th of October, I had motorcycle run for me. We actually tracked him right out, right out of the class. So Andy does a very good job training his dogs, making sure the handlers know what they're doing. Andy also helps by having classes set up every other Wednesday that all handlers come around and train together with. There's two groups of DLE, which is Dogs for Law Enforcement, which is what Andy is certified as Master Trainer in. And he actually does one on the, more or less, let's say the west side of the state. And then there's one that's also DLE that Andy does some of the training with and stuff, but other trainers are with on the east side. So every Wednesday, your officer would have the opportunity to train with multiple guys. And then every year, there's a certification, it's a week-long certification through DLE. This year's going to be in Independence again, and there's talk of maybe hosting in Floyd County the following year. I don't know if I want to go through all that work of setting it up, but. So there's a lot of resources available, not just with getting the dog through Andy and the training, so.
You see, that's a dual-purpose dog?
This is a dual-purpose dog.
You made the comment that when people flee from you, cut him loose. Now, a single-purpose dog won't be able to do that, correct?
Nope, it's just going to do narcotic, or narcotic findings, as well as if we can get it trained as well to track for people as well, but we're not going to track any kind of fugitives because that's going to lead to bigger issues if a dog that's not supposed to bite tries to go and find a fugitive.
You can use them, you just got to be cautious. Obviously, with having a dual-purpose dog, tracking a felon or a fugitive, you have capabilities of sending him to apprehend. We still use extreme caution anytime there's possibly firearms. If it's somebody you know's not potentially armed, you can easily track with a single-purpose dog. Just, you got to know the capabilities of your dog, your handler, what resources you got to go with them. I was called up here a few months back. Howard County had a guy that was wanted. We just didn't have enough guys to safely do it, and that's unfortunate I didn't come because I told them that. I was like, if we can't safely do it, there's, you have another kind.
Yep.
And that's the option to get a way out too, so. But yeah, he's dual-purpose, so we use him for apprehension. We've used him five or six times. I had three call-outs with the northeast side of a task force out of Mason City, the SOG Operations Group. I've been called out through several times to help them utilize it with that. We had a guy on a warrant hiding in a garage that was on probation violation or parole violations, he was going back to prison. And I stuck him in the doorway, gave him announcements, he barked, guy gave himself up, he didn't want to go out. Didn't want to deal with him. That's some of the benefits you have. Now, you got to weigh the options, is the benefits of a dual-purpose dog for what you guys look for in your community? And that's something you guys and the chief of the department has to decide. I like it because if I work overnights in the county, sometimes we're 20 minutes away from our backup. All I got to do is push the button on my side, my door pops open, I got instant backup. So it's just options, whatever you guys prefer. So we did actually hide some narcotics in here right before I started, so we'll, nobody break a dog, right? Ain't going to bother you, so. Here, two. He's in odor, he's just trying to locate it down now, so. Best way to describe it when they get odor, it looks like a funnel, like a chimney, the smoke gets farther, gets farther away, they'll get that odor. And then they work it down to the funnel where the source is at. Like I said, everything he does is for his reward toy, so as soon as he realized he had it, that's why he looks back to me. So he does stand, sometimes he gets excited where he won't, so to sit there and go back and forth to the source two or three times. Teats. Teats. Ow. Even? Wait. Teats. Boots. What are the questions you got for me or his family?
Will that dog stay with you all the time? He stays at your house or?
So he lives with me. I got three kids and my youngest daughter's three. She feeds him, she lets him in and out of the kennel, he goes outside to go to the bathroom. I'm with her, obviously. But otherwise, yeah, he's in the house. I have one other dog that's an inside-outside dog, depending on it's cold or whatever, he's house-trained, but he's outside during the summertime most of the time, but yeah, he's with me 24/7.
So are those dogs, the initial training is actually done in like Germany or Poland or?
So a lot of these dogs, the obedient work, like that Andy's been getting, is already a lot of the obedience training available. So at six weeks old, they start over there in Poland, they start training the obedience on them. And then from there, Andy gets home, Andy does the imprinting of the narcotics, or the tracking, whatever that needs to be done. A lot of the testing's done ahead of time, as far as determining if they're a candidate for dual purpose, or it doesn't have the, some dogs just don't have the want to do the bite work. Right command for him, he'd bite all of us in here.
Really?
But, I mean, he's trained not to bite and one to bite. But yeah, a lot of it's done over there and then Andy finishes off because once he determines, you guys have to make a decision if you want marijuana imprinted in the dog. Some departments are going way with it because everybody's legalizing it now, and they don't know what they're going to do if it's trained and already imprinted in marijuana, well, they legalize it. Are the government going to say, nope, you got to get rid of the dog, get a whole new dog, or can you have marijuana taken off? They've already successfully proven you can take it off the dog, but it's going to be up to the court systems at that point.
So what is the big thing? Fentanyl?
So they don't do fentanyl because fentanyl reacts to a dog just like it reacts to a human, so if they sniff the fentanyl and get in their system, they could kill the dog. Now Narcan works the same as us, but we all know Narcan, depending on how much you have, how effective it's going to be. May not help. So usually, the four main you'll get imprinted would be like your methamphetamine, your cocaine, your heroin, and marijuana. Now MDMA is the same base, it's like meth, so they'll still hit on MDMA, they'll still hit on ecstasy, some of that stuff, because the base compounds the same as one of the other narcotics. So you want to say hi?
So for our canine, I think me and Officer Walper have discussed, and a little bit with, as well as the chief, I don't think we're going to be doing marijuana, just because we don't know if it's going to be legal. And the last thing we want to do is get through the course next thing you know, July 1st of next year, it's legal, or whenever they decide. So we don't want to waste anybody's time or money or resources to put in, put into a dog and then not have to be able to use them. I have been working with Deputy Chatfield, as well as a few other departments, on looking at policies to kind of, obviously, chief's going to be the one to finalize all that if we get approval for it, because he's boss man, so. And, and we are, like I earlier said earlier, we kind of, Mr. Klein did say that you can get a Shepherd and a Malinois for a single purpose. It's just not likely when people go and get one. They usually stick with the floppy-eared dog style breed. So that's, if we decide to go single purpose, you know, if everybody agrees to that, then that's probably the direction we would head, is a Lab or a German Shorthaired. And Mr. Klein guarantees his dogs. If the dog, for whatever reason, is not tracking the way it's supposed to, or not locating the way it's supposed to, as long as it's not a training error from the handler, he does guarantee his dogs, and he will take that dog and get you a brand-new one for no cost.
So how long does the officer have to go work with the dog at that training facility over there then?
He just does the four, four-week, I believe, and then after that, it's just a routine week-long annual training, as well as your weekly trainings if you wish.
Yes, four weeks, Monday through Friday, so he's home on the week, officer would be home on the weekend. And most of the training, we've got a few different locations over between Dill School and Garner's, one of them uses a lot for narcotics, he does a lot of tracking up at Forest City, so they kind of bounce around that area when they do the training. And then I'm not for sure if it'll still be four weeks if you don't go dual-purpose because he might knock a week off, depending on the tracking. I'm not sure how he does that. I just know that our first two weeks was narcotics, and then we moved into room searches, bite work, stuff like that, and then tracking, so I'm not sure how he would do that.
So the handler goes over there for that time?
Correct.
Runs all week?
Yep, so once you commit, the handler, usually ahead of that time, he'd get the dog, the handler would, that way you can get a week or two of bonding with the dog, not sort of training, but just bonding with the dog, get to know the dog, and then you'd go over for the training.
And so are there a lot of these dogs around here? How many other departments around have these?
Just in northern Iowa, you have, in this area that I know of, surrounding you guys, you have, Chicksaw County's got a single-purpose yellow lab. We have Sirius. Mitch County's got a dual-purpose over there. I think they got two in Winnaiship County.
Two in Winnaiship, yeah.
So that'd be kind of what's surrounding you guys that I know of. Isn't there one in, one of the PDs in Bayette County, I think?
Postville, I think.
The Postville?
Does she still have?
No, Postville does not have a canine anymore at West Union, I know.
Well, she left West Union, but I think she went back to Postville. Well, she left West Union, but I think she went back to Postville.
Okay, but I didn't know if she took the K9 well.
Yep, she did get to keep it, yep. So, so Postville, like he was thinking too, they have one. I'm not familiar with that dog. As far as dogs in the area, you start getting west, like Circle County doesn't actually have a dog, they got a dual purpose or a single purpose dog in Mason City that's gonna be retiring here probably in about six to 12 months. And then a lot of them are Worth, Winnebago, out that way there's a few, and then you start getting along the river in south and stuff, you have more. Our DLE group, I think last year there was like 112 of us that were in Independence that certified, mostly from the state of Iowa, a few from Illinois, Wisconsin.
So another reason why we're looking at getting one here in Cresco is we have had a lot of dealings with narcotics in this past year alone. The amount that we got may not seem like a lot to some people when you say it out loud, but it is a large amount for this area alone. And then there was a substantial amount found just right outside of Cresco near here. So the reason why we want one in here is time is of the essence when it comes to a traffic stop. Say I get a traffic stop and I'm getting suspicions of whatever, then we have kind of a timed limit of how long, we have a window of when we can get that dog around the vehicle as well because we can't just sit there and wait 30 minutes to an hour for a K9 to get there to run around the car because then you start getting into right violations and stuff like that. So for this, it'll be super easy to access with him being right here if we need him to go, or her, whatever, sooner the dog comes in, so.
So if the officer changes jobs, the dog generally goes with him, is that how?
So the dog's gonna stay here. When it does retire, that's something that we do have to look into policy about doing. Some people will sell the dog at retirement for a dollar back to the handler because they have been with them the whole, the whole time they were working. It just depends on what kind of policy we put in place. But yeah, the dog will stay here unless we put a policy that says they can either buy it out or buy it at retirement.
But if the handler would decide to take another job in a different city, the dog...
K9's gonna stay here, it's not gonna travel with them. Because we, the people of this community are putting money towards it. I don't know if it's even easy to try to train another handler for...
So it's just like Tool, just like squad car technically, the way they look at them. The dog is actually a department or a city asset, it's not belong to the handler. So if you punish the handler, you fire the handler, handler moves, technically the dog still is part of the department. So unless it's an agreed upon deal like he's saying, the dog would technically stay unless you guys or the department said otherwise.
Go back to the kennel with the new handler, go through the retraining four weeks and back in service.
Yep. And I've actually seen it twice since I've been handling with him. Andy Klein's retrained, guys have decided that him, it wasn't what they wanted, wasn't what they expected, too much work with this, then stayed at home, so Andy redid it for the department. I'm not for sure, I can't speak on what agreement is made as far as cost-wise to retrain it. Obviously wouldn't be a full amount, we could have already purchased the dog.
Yeah.
It'd be an agreed upon price, I think, at that point, so.
What's your timeframe, Sam, having this operational?
So, he, Mr. Klein actually was trying to ask me that today and I was like, well, it's gotta be after July 1st. So he does have a class in August that'll give us more than enough time to make sure we have all of our pledge money. He does do a contract if the department so chooses, but we're gonna try to avoid that at all costs. So we do already have a few, we do have pledged money a little bit right now. We're still trying to get in contact with other people around the community, we're trying to go to the bigger businesses and then eventually we kind of want to just, tonight actually, we're gonna open it up, we're gonna have a Facebook page, we're gonna try to get radio at a time to help try to get more donations. As well as we do have a, I have a few ideas for fundraising events, we just gotta get them set up and in order. We're kind of hoping, I mean, if we have to do the fundraising, that's fine, we're hoping that we can get almost all of it through donations. So that way we can definitely get it going and then people actually know what their money is going towards because we planned on, you know, if one of these businesses like Cresco Bank up here, they already pledged some money, so if they want a demonstration, Officer Walker and the dog can go in there and say, hey, look, you know, this is what you guys, you know, pledged money to and donated to, so you know, we'll, we'll help you out and show you what he's learned and hopefully get him back on the community and get that good presence going of all the work that Officer Walker's putting in to help the community out as well as the rest of the department.
What's it gonna cost to convert a vehicle over to handle the dog then?
So right now, it sounds like we do have a vehicle that was purchased this year unless we're going a different direction.
I'll be one of the Durangos.
So, so we got one of the Durangos. We're hoping, the last time we had a K9 in Cresco, Bloom Line did custom make a cage for it. We're kind of hoping that happens again. If it doesn't, completely fine, but the cage is probably gonna run about a few thousand dollars just to buy and then maybe a thousand to install as well. But we're kind of hoping we get some good donations in the right areas for that to help with that.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll try to get ahold of Amy as well and I'm sure she'll, like we were talking about, may have some more questions, so I'll try to get in contact with her and talk with her as well.
Yep.
Thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you.
So if you guys are interested in it, I would really like a motion to authorize them to do it and then if I need to add it to the budget.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
To reinstate the program.
That'll be in this budget?
It would be in next year's budget, so starting in July.
Okay.
And then add to the budget. And you want them to fundraise all of the funds, correct?
I mean, I think we got anything we can donate to or add to it.
Did we have a fund with some money in it or is that not?
I think it's been spent down.
Bleated, okay.
What about lost money? Can any of that go toward it or?
We could check on it, but...
Well, I think we just just put it in the budget for now and then whatever.
Okay.
That's money that we'd get back, but I mean, I'm looking at it as, it'd be 13,000 right, one dual or single purpose dog and 8,000 to redo the vehicle 20 loans, I mean, and then the expenses to go over there.
I don't think the vehicle'd be that high, but...
Yeah, so I mean, I'd put it in the budget.
Okay. All right, so Stan and then Rich. McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Okay, number...
Thank you.
Number five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a 28E agreement with Clean Energy Districts of Iowa.
And that's just a follow-up on the presentation from last time for the 5%, which is 1,050.
Need a motion for approval?
Yes. Do you want me to read this or no?
Um, I don't think you need to read the whole 28E agreement. So the purpose, you'll declare the purpose in two more down.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Okay, motion to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with Clean Energy Districts of Iowa.
Well, I guess, I'll make the motion, it's the same thing.
It's basically the same thing, yep, it's just their form versus ours.
Good. You need a second?
Got it.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Number seven, motion to declare a public purpose and approval of $1,050 payment to the Clean Energy Districts of Iowa in accordance with the 28E agreement.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I'll let you read the... Okay. So the purpose of this agreement shall be to support agency's intention to intervene in connection with achieving the goals of reducing energy burdens and advocate for the interests of residents, businesses, and institutions in Cresco, Iowa. And the goal of this joint action between the city and the agency shall be to oppose the magnitude of the proposed rate increase by Alliant Energy. Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
All right, number eight is approval of Class C Retail Alcohol License LC-2 Quellada Jalisco. Number two, Incorporated Pending Dram Shop Insurance.
I checked just before the meeting, we're still waiting on their insurance, but we can approve it pending that.
So, second.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number nine, discuss vacant mayor position and motion for special election or appointment.
So with the position coming open, either you guys can choose to appoint or you guys can do a special election. If you appoint, it has to be done within 60, sorry, 60 days. The public can request election, so they can file it within the first 14 days or they can file it 14 days after you guys have appointed. So you guys just need to decide how you want to fill the position.
So figuratively speaking, if we appoint somebody, somebody can still come in and...
Still want an election.
Still want an election, so either way.
We're committed either way.
Yeah.
So I think we...
At this point, go ahead, make a motion to appoint and we gotta post it. It goes in the paper, in the news or whatever, and if it arises, then so be it.
Did you make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
And then with...
Well, I mean, we're making the motion, it's by appointment, all right?
Correct, we're making the motion by appointment. So with that, then I would need the dates that you guys want to have.
By doing that, if we appoint somebody, we'll save $2,300 on an election.
Correct, I'm not quite sure how much.
I think it's a little more than that, actually. I thought it was 3,000.
That sounds right. So I just need to know the dates that you guys want the applications due back and when you guys would like to interview.
Well, we gotta post it.
How long's it gotta be posted? Two weeks?
So I was thinking that we would send it to the paper this Friday, so it'll be published on the 31st and then I was thinking, give them about two weeks.
So that was bad.
So about the 14th.
February, yeah.
Okay.
And then...
And then...
19th, we could be interviewing it. All right.
I was wondering if maybe you guys wanted to do interviews?
Before that meeting?
Before that meeting, so you guys can be ready and appoint that meeting.
I think that would be the best.
Okay, so like that Thursday or Friday?
Before. Be back the 9th.
Okay.
Okay. And then on the 19th, then we'll appoint.
Someone.
Yep, okay, sounds good.
So is that gotta be a motion to that or?
Um, I just need a motion to publish the notice then.
I'll make it.
Second it.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
So that was number 10, right?
Yep.
All right, number 11, motion to approve the updated credit card policy.
And that is just to update names on it, nothing else, just changing on it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
That's basically just adding dates, though, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Resolution authorizing signers on depository accounts.
And that's just basically doing the same thing?
Same thing.
Okay. And a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number 13 is to discuss personnel committee and possibly appoint members.
I think that in the interest of that personnel committee, we need to wait until we have a full committee here to make any decisions on forming and who's gonna be available on it, so.
I think part of that discussion is we want to know what, what, what they're gonna be doing.
What's the expectations.
Yes.
And that would be up to you guys to determine, too.
And I think we'd want the full squad here.
Yeah.
So the second meeting in February, is everybody planning on being here?
First meeting, no, somebody's gone?
I think Rich is gone.
Okay. Second meeting in February would be fun.
19th, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Better a work session, I suppose would be another option.
I'll probably go with that, too.
All right, number 14, discuss sewer aging equipment project and planning and design loan.
I just have an update here from WHKS on the aging equipment. So they're gonna be submitting the project facility plan to the Iowa DNR this week, then they'll be visiting with Mike at the sewer plant to look at the design details at the plant and the lift stations. The next submission step is going to be sending in the environmental review paperwork to the DNR and the IUP application to the SRF. The engineers also think the planning and design loan is very commonly used as part of the loan process. You can use it for engineering and advisor fees and either pay it back within three years at 0% interest with no fees, or you can roll it into the construction loan with all of the rest of the project. Does anybody have any thoughts on it?
So the bottom line is, there's a bunch of equipment at the sewer plant that needs to be replaced, that's old.
Yeah, it's like 2.8 million. So we started the process because they do have a forgiveness program right now. We won't know how much the forgiveness is until we're far into the project, it's just if you guys want to borrow for the planning and design or if you want to pay for it out of reserves.
In that amount, we don't know yet.
Yeah, and we don't know kind of...
It's kind of a two, we gotta go forward with it to get in on the forgivable loan part of it.
We gotta get that in.
So the longer we dawdle, the more, the more communities will get involved and lessens our chance of getting anything.
And this portion is just for the planning and design loan. So we've already done all of the rest of it, it's just the planning and design loan, either we pay for it out of reserves or we can use the...
The only thing I'm asking is, do you, is there a possibility that we might have to add some equipment because of somebody new coming to town?
That could possibly happen, but I think that's further down the line, that they'd look at it.
So we need a motion on that?
If you guys want, go ahead with the loan, yes. And I wouldn't do the loan if there was any additional cost because we have the money in the reserves. So if there's any additional cost, I wouldn't do it.
But this motion is just getting the wheels to get it going.
For the planning and design loan, correct.
Yep, okay.
So you go first?
I'll second it. We've had to do it for how many years?
Yep.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
All right, number 15 is resolution authorizing the city clerk to apply for a planning and design loan with the state resolving or revolving fund.
That's what I just did.
That's what I thought. Okay, number 16 is discuss FY 2025 budget.
So I sent out last week the last part of the budget, so our overall budget of loss is about 395,000. So our overall budget of loss is about 395,000. Um, general fund, we're currently looking at a game of, gain of 38,000. Um, if you guys have any more questions on it, otherwise we're gonna kinda get it rolling to start the public hearing process. This year, we have to send it to the Department of Management by mid-March so they can send it out to the county, so they can send out a tax statement to everybody in the county by the 20th. Um, so the first meeting in April, we'll have to have a special meeting before the meeting in order to approve the budget.
I had a question on that, I mean, it was brought up about a, a pickup that was needed now.
Um, um, the sewer department had mentioned it to replace what they had. And I know it was in our original one, it's not in this one, so it must've got taken out.
I thought it was taken out.
There was a couple things on here to talk about, if we can do that for a second. And one of them, out at the, uh, burn pile, we had budgeted $100,000 for a fence. We have to put a fence around it, um, for when we burn. And we believe that a high tensile farm animal type fence would suffice. And it'll be a lot less than $100,000, we just don't know how much that is yet.
Have we, have we received specifics from the DNR?
I believe.
I believe they just said a fence.
Well, that's a pretty broad statement.
And it's to keep people out when there's a fire out there.
So it's literally a post and high tensile cable fence, probably three strands.
Yep, and I don't know who determined that was, um, okay, but I can dig into that, I don't, I guess I don't know.
And then my other question, can I see this?
You know, I mean, if, if that's, if it's left up to the community or to the, the city to determine what that fence is, I guess we need to determine that and then go from there, but?
Yep.
Yeah, we need to get a clarification on that.
On this one here?
Few strands. And there's no sense putting a, a six foot or seven foot chain link fence all the way around?
It's an $100,000 estimate, yeah.
24, 25, right?
You know, maybe a, a couple of gates, east and west end type thing.
The, um, the water meter replacement in the budget, we had $150,000. Um, that's, you know, buying an X amount of meters and more than we would need for a year. So that could be, probably could be $50,000.
But that's gonna be ongoing for years.
It's gonna be ongoing for a while, um, depending on how we wanna approach that. So, I mean, if we leave the 150,000 in, they'll just replace the ones that are still working in order to get them done maybe, but, um?
But they have to, it has to be done anyway, right?
It has to be done anyway, yeah.
So I mean, we gain, it's in the budget.
Push the expense off to the next year is what happens, yeah.
Right now, they wait till the battery dies on one of them?
For the most part, yeah, yeah.
Can we even get the new ones yet?
They are, they've got, uh, they've been putting them in here and there, I think, yeah.
Part of the issue too is our software is not compatible to be upgraded. So if that software goes down?
Yeah.
We have to manually read meters.
So we gotta have so many anyway.
Yeah. The, uh, um, street project down on the, on Second Avenue to replace the storm sewer, they estimated $100,000. Um, it would be hiring somebody to do it, you know, we started and did part of it. But the rest of it, there's a lot of water lines and drop lines in there that, uh, it's gonna get a little more technical. So they would, um, I think we'd, we'd be better served by having, uh, that hired out.
We would do the cement work, we'd have, uh, we'd have somebody come in and do the digging and install the pipe, do the fittings, but our guys would do the concrete work, correct?
I, I'm not, I believe so, yeah, I believe so, is what the plan would be. And that's what it is to finish up down there, so.
Yep.
Um, what's the goal, to talk about these items right now or is that?
You can talk about them if I'm?
Okay. Um, the sewer plant, they've got the septic receiving facility in there. Mike said on a scale of one to 10, that's probably an eight or nine out there. Um, lawnmower, kind of the same thing, those are smaller projects. Um, the rest of the water department stuff, most of that stuff, they feel is very important.
If it's infrastructure related, I think it needs a stay.
Yep, yep. And then I don't know as far as the other outside public works.
So on the bottom of your handout, we listed the ones that we had cut. Um, so the scene shop, we're requiring them to fund it 100%. The floating floor for the aerobics room, we reallocated it to the Sirius budget. Um, there were some fitness center aerobic supplies. Architect fee was pulled into the 24 budget. Um, the pump room and restroom roof, um, we're pulling that in as well. Security cameras at City Hall and the police department, um, a street truck, the runway improvements,